Like to call to order the July 11th, 2024 Nashua Planning Board Meeting. Could I please have a roll call, Mr. Hirsch?
Mayor Doncicus, Mike Peterson, Bob Ballinger, Adam Varley, Maggie Harper.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott LeClair.
Here.
Larry Hirsch, here. Cameron Green.
Here.
Patricia Cle.
Thank you. Has anyone had a chance to read the minutes from the June 20th, 2024 meeting? I would like to make a motion. Yes, Mr. LeClair?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Planning Board's minutes from June 20th, 2024 as written.
We have a motion to approve for Mr. LeClair. Do I have a second? Mr. Hudson? And they're approved. Do we have any?
Just do the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please bear with me tonight, everyone. I don't normally do this.
I'll pass it.
Could I have a vote?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upsting.
Upsting.
Okay, so four and one.
Yeah. Okay.
Any communications from staff?
No additional communications since things were loaded up.
Thank you. Any reports from Chairman, Committee, or Liaisons? I don't have any reports tonight. So I'd first like to read the Planning Board procedure before we begin. The hearing will begin at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the stipulations recommended by staff. The Board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The Chair will then ask for testimony from the audience, and I shall have the ability to limit the length of public testimony in the interest of time. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern will be able to speak at that time. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The Board may then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will be then given a rebuttal period at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will begin the public meeting, at which time the Board will deliberate and vote on the application. We ask that both sides keep the remarks to the subject at hand and not to repeat what has been already said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented in considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances of Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. Thank you, and if everyone could please turn off their cell phones. The first case that we have before us tonight is Old Business Subdivision Plans, A24-0037, Cellos Family Investment Properties LLC owner. Do we have a representative here tonight? Thank you. And I think we would also like to discuss Old Business Site Plans, A24-0038 as well in tandem. Has anyone been able to review the plans? I would like to take jurisdiction.
Move to take jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Do I have a second? Mr. Hudson? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. My name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer at 3 Congress Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, tonight representing Stellis Family Investment Properties. With me this evening is Andy Prohman, our project attorney. I'd also like to record to state that I personally am also in a butter to this project. It's just read into the record, we're seeking two actions by the Planning Board this evening, a subdivision and a site plan. Thank you for the permission to present the facts of both projects at the same time. The subdivision is fairly straightforward. I'll probably spend a little bit more time on the site plan, and of course, I'll be here to answer any questions the Board may have. Before I present the specifics, let me just make sure you know where we are on the property. This is located at the corner of Northeastern Boulevard and Congress Street. It is part of the PI Park Industrial Zone land on the west side of the Everett Turnpike, just south of Exit 5. The current property is 2.08 acres in size, and it's boarded by Congress Street to the north, Northeastern Boulevard to the west, commercial uses to the south, to the east. And generally, this neighborhood is a commercial business and industrial neighborhood. Upon the site existing is a 19,000 square foot, one-story building located up in the corner, up along Northeastern Boulevard. Currently, there are four tenants in this building. Parking for the facility is on the side and behind the building of 78 spaces. The back part of the lot is currently fenced in and is used for outdoor storage by the property owners. Our client, Stellis Family Investment Property, owns the entire property. There's no wetlands on the site, and we're serviced by utilities out in the public ways. Now, with regard to the first case, the subdivision, this is a subdivision. The intent is to subdivide this one lot into two parcels. New Lot 52 is the larger of the two parcels. It will contain 1.4 acres and will include the existing building and its requisite parking. New Lot 70 will contain about seven tenths of an acre and will be the subject of the next case, the site plan this evening. This is a very straightforward subdivision plan of land. Both lots comply to all the standards within the PI Zone and the Nashua Subdivision Regulations. Madam Chair, we have asked for one waiver, which is your Section 190-281, for survey adjacent to parcels within 1,000 feet. It's a fairly common waiver request, and we've prepared a letter defending that request in the file. Before I move to the site plan, is there any questions on the subdivision?
Any question?
Thank you. So the proposed development this evening is for a site plan on New Lot 70, that .7 acres I mentioned. Its new address will be 8 Congress Street. And it's being proposed to construct a simple one-story commercial industrial building that measures 8,000 square feet in size. And Scott, if you could maybe zip to the site plan for...
Sure.
You gotta get the other monitor. In this mess. Yeah, you gotta... Yeah, you gotta move back. Okay. Yep. There we go. Have to start all over again.
Yeah.
Again, one-story, 8,000-square-foot building, and that's on the back part of the property that's currently used for outdoor storage. It's intended, the building, for one tenant, but it could support possibly two tenants. It is a slab on grade construction, so there's no basement being proposed. The site improvements include shared access off of Congress Street with Lot 52, shared parking between the two lots. Keep in mind, our client owns both properties. They intend to retain both properties. When you look at the parking together, of course, the Nashua Code has quite a range for facilities like this, between 35 and 205 spaces. As I mentioned, the existing site has 78. The proposed plan will have 97, so we're adding a building, but we're also adding 19 parking spaces to the project. As noted in the staff report, we have received two variances for the project. The first is for parking along Congress Street within the front yard setback. This property has historically enjoyed pavement right up to the property line. We're pulling some back. We're introducing more open space, and with the help of the City Engineering Department, I think we've got a better plan in terms of access management. We've got more defined curb cuts. Currently, right now, it's kind of a sea of pavement out into the street. Open spaces increased from 10.5 to 12.65. We do have a new loading bay. We thought it was important to try to attract the right tenant here to this building. We have a loading space. That dock is deep enough to position a vehicle, so its front end is not sticking out into Congress Street. Your code says we don't like loading docks facing streets, but it's fairly prevalent in this neighborhood. I think we counted 10 or 11 existing buildings. Mr. Prohman, Attorney Prohman, also received a variance from the zoning board of adjustment for that, for dock-facing Congress Street. Utilities are all underground to the building. We have new landscaping, new lighting. You can tell by the drawing that really from the back of the existing building to the new building is an entirely new paved parking lot. Stormwater, being a redeveloped site, we're really required to improve drainage to the maximum extent possible, as determined by this Board. Currently, the site just goes boom, right out into Congress Street. We were challenged by DPW to make things better, and we were fortunate to be able to do that. We've got, in this new parking area, new curbing, new catch basins, new piping. In the middle of it, we've got a subsurface stormwater system. So we're providing both quantitative and qualitative treatment for this parking area where currently none exists. The result is much less flow getting out into the system in Congress Street. We're also improving three catch basins and some piping in Congress Street. Congress is slated, I think, for pavement this year. We thought the system that's out there now is completely undersized. We thought it was in much need of an improvement, and our client agreed to upsize those lines. So we'd like to get out of the way in advance of that paving. We did submit a traffic for the 8,000 square feet. It didn't meet any thresholds. My testimony is that Congress Street is a very low-flow traffic street, so traffic is really not an issue. Madam Chair, we have two waivers, similarly, survey of adjacent parcels within 1,000 feet, and also architectural standards. There were a couple standards in the Nashua Land Use Code that promote pitched roofs and things like that that aren't really compliant with a commercial industrial building like this. Our letter goes into the defense of those requests. Scott, is there one more plan there? There's a graphic, I think, of the building to give the Board a sense of what this might look like. Go back. You can just go back. This one? Yep. Nope. The... I hit the refresh button. Nope, the refresh button. Next to that. Well, he's searching. I'll just wrap up, Madam Chair. You know, we've got a flat roof, 18 to 22 foot high. It's a pretty standard-type commercial industrial building, fixed glass windows, split-faced blocks, architectural panels on the side. Hopefully, they're able to start construction this year. It would take about six to eight months to complete. In summary, we believe both applications conform to the requirements of the Nashua Land Use Code. The conditions of approval as outlined for both cases by staff... There it is, Scott. Thank you. The conditions of approval as outlined by staff are acceptable to our client, and with that, we respectfully seek your approval this evening. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Mr. Hudson?
Not for the applicant, but for staff. Using the agenda and drilling into the plan link, it only pulls up five of the 15 sheets in the plan set.
Yes.
Are we not posting full plan sets anymore?
There is a challenge with full-size sets and just the file size, so we do kind of curate a selection of plans from the set. If you have plan sheets that you would like to see as part of that going forward, happy to take suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, in engineering, I have the benefit of seeing the full set before it comes to this room, so I personally don't. But like, for instance, I was just gonna go refresh my memory of what the drainage design was, and I couldn't find that from the overall site plan. Maybe the applicant could refresh my memory. I believe we're gonna do some infiltration, overflow to the city system. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly. If you scroll back, Scott, to maybe the site plan, a couple... Can you scroll up? Okay, this is site plan on this table? Yep. There you go. Utility. Okay. I can work from that. So currently, you know, when it rains, everything gets out into Congress Street, and there's a low point kind of where that curb cut is right now. No attenuation quantitatively or qualitatively. What we propose to do by rehabbing that parking lot is to make grading changes that prevent that direct discharge to Congress Street. We're gonna contain it within the project. We have some catch basins. We're then piping into a subsurface, almost septic system for stormwater. You've seen the polyethylene chambers, and there's an isolator row in there that seeks to remove large grit in particular from stormwater. We did testing. It's not great, but it's not bad. You know, we're not in groundwater, and, you know, with conservative estimates, we're going to achieve infiltration where we currently have none. And you're correct, the overflow is out into Congress Street. There's a 12-inch line from northeastern to the midpoint of our site, but from there, there's a bunch of 8-inch lines, and that's what we're rehabbing. We didn't think connecting into an 8-inch line in this day and age was proper. So your code says maximum extent possible. I really do believe we've met that intent of the Nashua Land Use Code.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to now open it up to the public. Is there anyone here in the audience that is in opposition or concerned of the plan? Please come forward to speak at the microphone. Is there anyone in the audience in favor that would like to speak? Hearing none. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Public hearing has ended, and in regards to both of these cases, would someone like to make a motion for each one separately?
I'll just put out sort of in our meeting, you know, have a review of both. It seems like an improvement on the existing site. You know, the stormwater part is welcome. I'm glad there it is. And the curb cuts are kind of a big deal. You really just kind of drive in wherever you want to, right? So I think it's important that those couple of things we've done, so definitely supportive of fixing that stuff.
Any other comments?
Good plan.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Please do.
All right, so I'm gonna first make a motion with respect to Old Business A24-0037 subdivision plan. That first motion's gonna be with respect to the waiver requests, with the request of the waiver from 190-28152 being approved, and that that waiver is acceptable and meets the intent of our guidelines, so I'll leave it at that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Green. All those in favor?
Any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Any discussion?
Sam, do we need to add on the bottom stuff?
I would just say, you know, as stipulated or as detailed in the staff report. Just so you don't have to read it, but then it's on the record.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I'll make an amendment, maybe to my motion, that adds on that the waiver, the considerations for the waiver is written in the staff report are included, so. Say one second.
A second? Second, Mr. Green? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
I'll make a second motion.
Thank you, Mr. LeClair. Go ahead.
All right, so I'll make that second motion with respect to the same case here, A24-0037, that we grant conditional subdivision approval in accordance with our approval criteria under 190-138G, and that we include the precedent and subsequent conditions as indicated in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. LeClair. Is there any discussion? Do I have a second?
Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, sorry?
Not for me.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was just a subdivision, yep. So I'd like to make a motion on the site plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was both of them.
Nope, that was just the first one. So with respect to case number A24-0038, this being the site plan for the same applicant, I would make, first like to make a motion regarding the two waiver requests that have been submitted, specifically 190-279EE, the site plan's submitted requirements, and 190-172, the architectural standards, that those both be approved, and that the considerations of the waiver be as recorded in the current staff report.
Do I have a second? Mr. Hudson? Any further discussion?
All the conditions in the staff report you said.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make one more. I'll make one more motion with respect to the same case, A24-0038, and that would be that we grant conditional site plan approval in accordance with our approval criteria under 190-146D, with the precedent and subsequent conditions as written in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Claire LeClair. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Green? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So now, thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda is New Business Conditional Use Permits, case A24-0105. And then we're also looking to hear, in conjunction with that, New Business Site Plans, case Someone here for the applicant?
Madam Chair, members before...
Hold on a second.
Just take jurisdiction first.
My apologies. Would anyone like to make a motion to take jurisdiction of both of these cases?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to take jurisdiction of both the conditional use permit, A24-0105, and the associated site plan, case A24-0106. Have reviewed those applications and find them complete.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Hirsch? All those in favor?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Sister Paula Marie Buoli. I'm president of Riviera University, and I'm joined by Mr. Stephen Parata, Vice President for Finance and Administration. With the growth of the university, we're in an opportune moment to expand our residential housing, and we come before you tonight to seek approval for our site plan. The university is committed to the same quality of materials, workmanship, aesthetics, and the same collegiality and listening in support of our neighbors and being good neighbors. With that introduction, I'd like to present Mr. Tim Manis, Project Manager from Dirk and Edson, who's been before this committee really several times in the last 10 years. Thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Sister Paula. Tim Manis, Project Manager with Dirk and Edson, 33 South Broad Street, Lititz, Pennsylvania. That's L-I-T-I-T-Z, 17543. Chair and Board, thank you again for hearing this case this evening. I do have a presentation, if the Board allows. I would just like to review the project with you and then talk about any specifics you'd like to ask about, or talk about the waivers, the conditional use permit. So if we could just have the next slide, please, if that's okay.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. So for project background introduction will be the first thing, then we'll look at the Phase 2 plans, and then some illustrations of the proposed project. Next slide. The Phase 1 project, which we were here for, you know, before this Board in June of 2022, proposed two buildings on the corner between South Main and Old Field along Clement Street, 37 beds per building, parking to go along with that, new curb sidewalks along Clement, Old Field, and Weld Street. And the project was completed and the move-in complete of the students this past January. It's been proven very popular with the students. It's a very attractive project, and with this submission, Riviera is preparing the next set of, or the next phase, rather, Riviera Village 2. And on this slide, you see the site on the upper area. It says Riviera Village 2, building site, and then the parking site, which is across Old Field Road. Next slide, please. I took this picture actually yesterday. It was a nice day to be out, a little hot, to take a picture. That is the, if I could call it, the flagship building on the corner of South Main Street and Clement. That's our Building 1. Building 2 sits directly behind it. What this project proposes is two buildings identical to this building further as you go along South Main Street. Next slide, please. So the proposed residential buildings 3 and 4, again, are apartment-style, upper class or upper division houses, housing with kitchens in those units, primarily single-bedroom apartments, some doubles on the upper floor. Of course, it's going to be accessible for those with needs in that way. And there are 37 beds per building, just like the first round, and in keeping with that same aesthetic, the buildings are of a smaller scale than traditional dorms, 37 apiece, much smaller than something like a Trinity or a Guild. So as always, our site goals are to provide increased green and organized walkways. It's interesting that in the last 10 years, Riviera has become much more of a walking campus and a much more accessible campus because of the additional walkways. Provide additional parking for housing units and also some displaced parking, and we're actually gaining some parking with this project, about 20 spaces. And as Sister Paula noted, the quality approach will be the same, the brick, the precast, the same, the brick, the precast, the granite, same types of materiality that you see there in Riviere Village Phase One. Next slide. This is the site plan based upon the plans that you actually have, just a rendering. And you see on the upper portion, the Riviere Village Buildings Three and Four, rather, with the green space below them, a small gazebo there with swings in it for students. And then the intervening area is the parking lot and Old Field Road. On the lower part of that illustration, you see the 94 parking spaces we're proposing. Currently, that area is occupied by Riviere Facilities and Maintenance Buildings. There's, I think, four buildings and a shed there. There are a couple of compactors there. There's some parking there. It's a bit of a hodgepodge of things that are in there. That is all moving, and so this will become all parking. Stormwater will be below grade, will be infiltrated back into the soil, and we'll be maintaining as much as possible all around the edges of that green. There's a fairly wide belt of green along the south side of that and DW Highway and behind the neighbors, the hoods there. We're maintaining those green spaces along with that row of evergreens to the left on your drawing. And the parking lot will be screened, especially on the north and east sides. Next slide, please. Now we have a series of aerial views. This is kind of where we are today. We have Riviere Village One and Two in place, and with the other campus buildings around, you see Old Field and Clement, kind of the intersection in the foreground. Next slide. This takes us over and kind of puts us over top of Muldoon Gymnasium, because this is a good angle to see Buildings Three and Four from. As they kind of march down the street there, you see the pedestrian access, the parking, and then the background of this one, the new parking. Next slide. And this is the new parking site on the right-hand side. I think if you go to the next slide, I have an existing picture. Well, it'd be down a couple. This is the green space. Yeah, that's the existing parking, or the existing facilities, maintenance, buildings there on the right, and the next slide shows the parking. Yeah, there you go. So that's that transformation. Sam, if you wouldn't mind going back to, or whoever's running the slides over there, going back to, Scott. That's the green space in the middle with what we call a swing gazebo. It's a gazebo with some swings and a firepit in it for kind of passive sitting outside and talking kind of things. And you see it surrounded by the buildings, and now you can just progress through the slides. I think we only have a couple left here. Yeah, so from in front of Muldoon, kind of at ground level, showing the area going over toward those buildings, where we believe a proposed crosswalk would be very helpful there. I know there's some comments we need to work out with engineering on that. And then the next slide. This is the corner of Old Field and Clement. You see the facilities, buildings there, kind of right in the middle of that photograph. And if you go to the next one, you'll see illustrated the parking, the screening. Just as we have that screen fence along the parking on the north side of Old Field, we're doing the same on this side in between our property and the hoods with screening. There'll be some electric car charging stations in this parking lot, along with the parking that I've discussed so far. And next slide, please. And this is, I can't quite see it clearly. Oh, this is back up the road from, on Clement Street, looking down toward the new project parking area, if you could go to the next slide. And that shows that. Not a whole lot of change there. It's just going to really become parking, trying to keep a lot of those existing trees. And then the next slide. This is next to the hood residence. We're working to move our parking kind of away from their property line so they can maintain that evergreen hedge there and a fence between the properties. Next slide. And so that's the effect we're trying to go for, and I think we're almost done. If there's one more. That's it. So that's the kind of overview of the project. The buildings will be just essentially rubber stamps of the first two buildings. It's the next two in that series, sidewalks, green space, parking. The conditional use permit, of course, is always required when Riviere does anything because we're in a, either an R9 or an RA zone, depending on where you are on campus. And the waivers also are ones we have typically asked for, for the property surveys and so forth, because we're on, we're on many parcels across 74 acres and the sheet size. One waiver that you might look at is the one for also the reducing the number of islands in the parking lot. We believe we're allowed to ask the board for that since we have some pretty good green space around the parking lot, and we're trying to balance islands with parking. We'd like to get some more parking in there. And we have reviewed the comments that we've received, the planning director's comments, really have no issues with any of those. We did look at the site today together, and we're going to reduce the amount of stone mulch we have, do more bark mulch, but are asking to keep the stone mulch kind of around the tight areas bordering the parking, just mainly because of snow. Pushing snow and salt into those areas, it just kind of works better. And in terms of other waivers, I think that's about it. Oh, other comments? We did receive the engineering department comments. I have spoken to our team over at TF Moran on that. They feel that all those comments are things we can address without an issue. Today, we received comments back from the state on our AOT permit, and again, feel that all those issues can be addressed. A lot of informational type questions, so we're already actively adding notes and trying to work on the drawings to address all of the feedback we've received so far from, from the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to open it up to the board for any questions? Mr. Leclair?
I just had questions about the crosswalks. I was interested in the discussions maybe with the city on that, because I know there's a lot of crosswalks, right? It's like, kind of like every three or four car lengths. Is there, has there been any kind of study of the, is there a reason not to consolidate or do something? Is it just because you're trying to keep people from going across, not in a crosswalk, but, I mean, I've driven down it many, many, many times.
Yeah.
It can be a kind of...
It's a bit of a struggle on a college campus, honestly, and we've seen this on many college campuses.
Yeah.
Where, and it almost seems to kind of go in waves.
Yeah.
Where nobody goes in the crosswalk, and then everybody goes in the crosswalk.
Yeah.
We have been talking to Riviere about that. They've been asking us about it and are very interested in studying that further in the future, how to control that. This particular crosswalk, I, we believe is going to be there whether we put it in or not, because, and if you're talking about the one on South Main Street, for instance.
Correct, yeah, not the ones for the parking area.
Yeah, the one over there, we have no problem moving that. That's, that's fine. The one on South Main, and we looked at that today with the planning director, there's very good site distances from that one. You can see a long way down both streets from that point, and that actually connects to a walkway that goes right over to Muldoon Gymnasium on up to Athletics and over to Science. And we feel that it's probably going to be a point of crossing whether or not we acknowledge it. So it should be a safe, well-done crosswalk there, but are glad to discuss it further, so.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I think that's satisfactory at this point. I think engineering's thought was the same as Mr. Claire raised, was that there's so many crosswalks out there. They're of varying materials, and I haven't, I've just gone through, you know, Google Street View here, looking again, but it seems to be a variety of signage or lack of signage. I just, we can work with the applicant more on that. I agree, the site distance is probably good from that location, but I just want to make sure we're doing the right type of treatment there, signing it appropriately. None of these crossings have any rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which we've done in other places. I don't know if that's warranted, so we'll continue to work through this issue with the applicant, perhaps, you know, perhaps some pedestrian counts may be warranted or something of that effect, just to see what we can do, because I think if you have too many in a location, you may lose the effectiveness of them. So we'll work through that. We had no objection to the crosswalk on Old Field that seemed to make sense. You got a large parking area, and you need that one. The other, so that's all on crosswalks, I guess I'd say. The other engineering comments, most of them are plan, cleanup, clarification sort of things. We, one of the waiver requests was for large-scale plans, although we don't object to that. We want some additional detail and work in the right of way, because at that scale, it's hard to see exactly what's going on. And when our engineering inspectors out there with them in the field talking about how to build a ramp in the right of way, we want to make sure we have the detail that we need for that, so. But otherwise, we have no, no concerns about this, this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any other questions from the board? I'd like to open it up to the audience. First, to anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Thank you. If not, next, any testimony from anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the plan, if you'd like to come forward and state your name.
Hello, my name is Peter Hood. I live on 12 Old Field Road, and we are the neighbor. And I just, we had concerns when Phase One had gone in, but we've been very pleased with the way it's worked out. And looking at Phase Two, our concerns, we had some concerns early on about a retention pond behind our property, but Sister Paula and Riviere has worked out the storm issues underneath the parking lot, so we're pleased with that. We're pleased that we'll get a little bit of field space to the right of us, and we're fine with parking to the left, so we are in favor of this plan and have no problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Okay, does the board have any other question, follow-up questions that you'd like to ask the applicant? No? Are you done? The public hearing has ended. Would anyone like to make a motion?
No, I'll just start in our meeting here, but comments again, I, yeah, and I think, I think it's probably warranted at some point to work through that crosswalk, because that's probably, that was sort of a little bit more of my concern. If you have like five or six in a row, do you actually lose the effectiveness of the, is it better to just have three or something, you know? So, but I'm pretty comfortable with that being worked through engineering and the city and the school, and the university seems to work well with the city, so I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. And I think the first phase looks great, and, you know, it's really kind of improved the area, so looking forward to it.
I guess I had a quick question. Then the president, in the conditions in the staff report, that would allow them to correct or figure out the issue with the crosswalk together with engineering, right?
Yeah, I'm looking at, you know, site approval, but condition B is to satisfy all comments noted in a letter by Joel Mandol, and that's where those issues are noted, to the satisfaction of Division of Public Works. So, yes, if we meet with them, talk through those, address, I mean, there are other, I didn't go through all of them, but there, that enables us to work through the things that we noted.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any, any other comments? Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll first make a motion with respect to the conditional use permit. This is case number 824-0105, specifically with respect to the waivers that have been asked for, and that we, we do approve the three waivers that were presented, those being 190-279BF and S for the site plan's minimal requirements, and 190-272 construction plans, 190-184D1 interior landscaping. We, we make those waiver approvals with the consideration language as is included in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. I've made a motion for approval with three waivers. Do I have a second? Mr. Green? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you want to continue?
Sure, and I will make a second motion with respect to the conditional use permit application, specifically that we approve, that conditional use permit application with, in accordance with our approval criteria under 190-146D with the precedent and subsequent conditions as indicated in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Leclair for approval. Do I have a second? Mr. Green? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a second motion now with respect to the, third motion I should say, with respect to the site plan, again, with respect to the waiver requests that have been presented, and that all those waiver requests as submitted be approved with the consideration language that is included in the staff report.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Mr. Hirsch? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, but I was going to do some discussion first. I just wanted to, if it's not too late.
No.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I'm reading through the staff report, and there's some technical review comments relative to stone mulch landscaping. I just want to make sure that in this approval, we're addressing that concern raised by staff.
Yes, similar to your previous note regarding to the satisfaction of the reviewing department, I think that language captures that adequately.
Okay, thank you.
Shall we vote again?
Sure.
All right, all those in favor, just to make sure.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and I will make a fourth motion here with respect, this one with, again, with respect to the site plan for this application, and that motion being that we approve, grant conditional site plan approval for the application in accordance with our approval criteria under Section 190-446D, and that the precedent and subsequent conditions as written in the staff report are also included.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. We have a motion to approve. Would anyone like to second? Mr. Hirsch? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. The next case I'm going to call is new business subdivision plans, 824-0072, James Kennedy Owner. Property is located at 21-23 Perry Avenue. Is there someone here for the applicant?
Madam Chair, Board.
Um, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to make a motion to take jurisdiction of this?
Motion, take jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Green, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry. Would you like to step forward and state your name and your address?
Yes, Gregory Wood, Meridian Land Services, 31 Old Nashville Road, Amherst, representing James Kennedy, Kennedy Properties, in the 2123 Perry Ave subdivision. Pretty straightforward subdivision. We were granted multiple variances previously for undersized lot for reduced square footage and reduced frontage. This was done in tandem with a recent application that we had, the DuCal development on Six Berkshire. These were done in tandem, very similar in their setup. Other things that I would like to point out that will be added to the plan, there was a new driveway that was finished yesterday. a new driveway that was finished yesterday for the current building, the twenty-one twenty-three, so the parking situation will be cleared up for that, that will be located as soon as we get the chance to and added to the plan. I did have one comment in the staff report, in the conditional approval for Section B, that the lot line would have to be moved from the center of Seventh Street. I wanted to bring up that the deed that we currently have does read verbatim to the center of Seventh Street, so therefore, we left it as that, but we did also make note that we are not removing access to Mine Falls, and we did not put any of the building setbacks into the previous right-of-way. So I was curious to know your opinion on how you would like to move forward in that regard. And I guess if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, just relative to that lot line location, city surveyor did a quick look, and it appears that that is right-of-way. I think on the plan, it was referenced that the city had an easement through there. I recognize that there may be a deed that says that there's ownership to the center of the city street, so there are oftentimes errors in deeds, but that may or may not be the case. I guess, I don't know what staff's thought is, I do see there's a condition here that addresses that to be revised at some point, I'm assuming we need a, some research from an attorney to determine what the condition actually is.
Sure.
Maybe staff can elaborate on that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would agree. We need a clarification since we have two different, differing opinions here, so.
Absolutely, I understand that, and, you know, looking through it today, you know, the original, this is done entirely off of deed and plot plan that was done several years ago, and the plot plan also references that. So we tried to accommodate the original subdivision plan with the current deed and the most current plot plan on file with the city, so we tried to do things as fairly between everything on record that we could.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Hudson.
Just as a follow-up, I guess, my question just would be, if we proceed tonight with conditional approval, would, would the lot configuration, should, should it be the case that that's right-of-way and not lot, would the lot configuration still be suitable in terms of dimension and dimensions and things that are required in our ordinances? Or may perhaps that analysis hasn't been done, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
We, we did take a quick look. In terms of minimum lot size, the lot can, you know, theoretically lose this area that's, you know, under debate. I think there wouldn't need to be a subsequent evaluation, and I can do this quickly as to whether or not, because this is an existing duplex, there's a density calculation that needs to occur. Whether or not this strip of land makes a difference, you know, I can figure that out relatively quickly. I did want to make a note about the deeds and the city having an easement, it's, it's not unusual, in fact, it is most common that, you know, traditionally, property owners will own to the center line of a road, and most roads are laid out, you know, they're called easement streets. The city has, you know, a viatic public use easement over the street, and when, and when a roadway is discontinued, the, the deeds, you know, the ownership goes back to the center line. So that may be, that language that you're referencing, you know, we own to the center line, well, naturally, it, it might be unusual to find such explicit language in a deed, so I just want to note that, and then per the city's access easement, you know, the, basically the establishment of Seventh Street, as this relates to the, the fence that's in this strip of land, you know, I think I would defer to the city engineer as to whether or not, you know, we really think that this fence impedes the access to Mines Falls in this area, given this strip of land is under debate, we do have a condition in here, you know, removal of structures, fence included, on city land. I think there could be a debate had about whether or not the fencing within this strip of land would actually need to be removed. So just an area of debate, but I think our conditions will capture that adequately, you know, to the satisfaction of the reviewing department, so this is something that we could carry on beyond conditional approval this evening.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I think that the engineering comment anyway relative to fence and structures is more related to the stuff in the back of the parcel.
Agreed.
That's in Mines Falls, I do, I do recognize what you're saying, I see that about the fence along the right-of-way, and I do appreciate your point about property owners do usually own to the center of right-of-way unless the right-of-way's been acquired and fee. However, it's not the usual case that we see lot lines drawn to the center of the right-of-way. You know, for example, Perry Avenue, in theory, they own to the center of that one too, that it's not drawn, that, that the lot lines extend to the center of Perry Avenue, so again, if you, there are conditions that where we can address these issues subsequent to approval, so I guess I'm comfortable with that, assuming that it doesn't run afoul of any other dimensionality or density issues.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. There any other questions from the board? Mr. Leclair?
Just following up on Dan's comments, if there were dimensionality issues, do they cause like a zoning issue?
I'm, I'm looking at that right now.
Because, you know what I mean, like, I, I mean, I'm not sure it matters to planning, but just for the applicant's sake, does, does that send them sort of back to zoning, which kind of restarts the whole thing, I just don't, I just don't want them going in circles. I don't think it's a big deal, I just, I'd rather than save the applicant from going in circles if it means clearing it up, you know, before we make a proposal.
Taking the fence away, you're moving the fence or whatever, if that's, if that can solve the problem.
What's your recommendation?
Yes.
Do you see that as a potential issue for the applicant?
Well, I should, I should have an answer for you, very quickly.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, relative to the fence, if I, if I'm looking at this plan, there's, there's a large amount of fencing in the abutting lot, there's a fence on the city parcel out back, there's two sheds that need to be moved, I mean, the fence along the right-of-way, I think there's enough fence work that's occurring, my preference would be to remove the fence from the city right-of-way. So, so there is commentary to that effect, I, you know, there's discussion, does it impede access to Mines Falls Park? If it's, this is actually right-of-way, then, I don't know, I could further consider that, but probably, probably my preference would be to remove the fence. Looking at the, where the right-of-way is, it looks like the struck, existing structures well beyond the side setback, or would be, will be on the side setback requirement, so I don't see any issue there, but staff could speak to the, to the density question.
All of the structures within the Seventh Street right-of-way are current city structures. There are signage for Mines Falls, access gate, ballers, things of that nature, they are nothing of.
I was, I was, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Hudson.
I was speaking of the residents.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I thought you were talking about what was impeding on the.
No, yeah, the existing residents would have ample side setback from the right-of-way line was what the point I was trying to make. I, I do understand the city has lots of structures in the right-of-way to control access.
So, in regards to zoning, obviously, a variance was obtained where twelve thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet would be required, that's, that contemplates this dwelling being a duplex. So relief was granted to eleven thousand nine hundred and forty, obviously, that is reflected on the plan, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, that does contemplate the ownership of this strip of land that's in question right now. So, you know, the, the relief was granted, there's debate, there could also be an argument made that, well, the zoning board, you know, granted it based on the information provided, you know, if we then, you know, obtain more information, do further deed research, and I think the intent would remain the same. So we would be comfortable moving forward with this, and then we can sort out this conversation post-approval.
Okay.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, for staff, so, I mean, it's, it's possible they might have to return to ZBA to address the.
That is possible.
But we don't, I mean, I'd hate to delay approval of this if it's, if it's confirmed or, you know.
Correct.
A different way, so, again, I think I'm comfortable, given on what we know currently, I suspect the case is that they own the center line, but the city has a right-of-way, but I welcome, I welcome deed, well, more than just deed research, I welcome an attorney's written opinion on this matter.
Sure. Agree.
Yeah, so clarifying, if they go back to ZBA, do they have to come back here?
I, I guess we could, it's a bit of an unorthodox condition, one that we don't typically like to put on the plans, however, you could condition the approval on, you know, settlement of this issue, and in the event that we find that, you know, the, the property owner does not actually own this land, they would then have to go back to the zoning board in order to adjust their relief down from eleven thousand nine hundred and forty to whatever that land area is without the strip.
Okay. I guess I'm not, I don't feel like that's a big, and we're still in the hearing, which is fine, I don't feel like that's a big necessity for this board, I just want the applicant to hear it and.
Yeah.
And, and come, I mean, it's more their issue than it is our issue.
Well, it becomes our issue in that, you know, we're potentially granting subdivision approval on a lot that would not meet minimum lot area requirements, you know, we effectively wouldn't be able to grant subdivision approval without the proper zoning relief. Obviously, they obtained relief, but they may need to obtain greater relief. But because it's an ongoing question, basically, functionally, this would result in possibly a conditional approval tonight with that condition, we would not be able to record the plan until this issue is resolved, so there'd be some expediency on, on the part of the city, but also the applicant as well to get to the bottom of this question, and then, if they have to go to the zoning board, we would obviously facilitate that meeting.
Okay. But as written, the conditions, I mean, is, is the, I mean, this is a question for the applicant, I mean, are you okay with the condition as written?
I'm okay in the condition of doing additional research necessary in regards to determining ownership of that strip.
Right, but you're not okay with it written as, you know, revising the, the line, you know, Condition B, redrawing it so it does not bisect the.
No, I am okay with revising and redrawing, yes.
Okay, you are, all right, cool. I think that's the key thing for me, is I'm not.
I think if, if research proves that that's necessary, and in the event that it does, returning to the ZBA for further lot area relief.
Okay.
That would be the condition?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I understand that.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to prove something that's not legally approval, approvable, so, so I.
Well, that's, that's why this is a little unorthodox, but I don't believe it's unheard of, at least even at this board where we've conditioned approvals, and again, this is a conditional approval, but conditioning it on zoning relief. I think there have been instances where there's tight timelines, and just the way the meeting schedules go, there's a conditional approval planning board prior to zoning, so. And hypothetically, this is an old neighborhood, and it could, the street could actually be a private street that was accessed to natural manufacturing or something along those lines, because that neighborhood was laid out by a natural manufacturing company, so that's why we need clarification, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Hudson.
So I don't, I don't want to, do they, do they, but this is too much longer, or make the condition too, too complicated, but I do think we need a, an opinion by an attorney, there's been many other cases where we had questions about right-of-way, and I believe that was a requirement. I mean, there's, I don't just want somebody to redraw this, or have, have somebody just tell me, show me the deed again, like, I want, I want, I want an attorney to do the research and provide us written, you know, a written opinion letter that, that is or is not city right-of-way for review before approving.
Yeah, if, I think stipulating that level of detail and what research is, I think is absolutely fine.
Is that appropriate? I mean, I don't, I think that's, I think that's what we need, but.
You need to answer it.
Tell me if, tell me if that's appropriate request, or if I'm off base.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just trying to see if I could put together something here that, while we have the hearing open.
Okay.
That we could come to, so would it read something like, prior to the chair signing the plan, and if required after legal review.
Yes.
The East River Lot Line will be redrawn so that it does not bisect city right-of-way, blah, blah, blah.
Aye.
And if the, and if the, well, give, give me some language on what else we got to, if that's okay.
And if legal review determines that the applicant does not own Seventh Street right-of-way or, or land under the easement, shall return to the zoning board for further lot area relief.
All right, so let me just get this one more time, so you can hear it too. So, prior to the chair signing the plan, and if required after legal review, the East River Lot Line will be redrawn so it does not bisect the city right-of-way that serves access to Minefall Park, the tabulations of lot statistics will need to be revised accordingly. Additionally, if legal review determines applicant does not own land under right-of-way, applicant shall return to ZBA for relief. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Does that sound acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Dan?
Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, as long as we're clarifying conditions, Condition B, I think, should be revised, says, should, to read, prior to the chair signing the plan, all comments in, in a letter from Joe Mandola, Senior Staff Engineer, dated July second, twenty-twenty-four, will be addressed to satisfaction of the Public Works Division versus the.
Okay, yes, all right.
Thank you. And for this.
Yes, Mr. Hudson?
I would just, I would just offer to the applicant, city surveyor will, is, be happy to share whatever records the city has, he has in his possession, that comment kind of originated from his, his look at it. I'll note that he's in next week and off on vacation the following week, so should you, should you have an opportunity to reach out to him next week, that'd be, that'd be ideal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will be going to the public for any public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan, please come forward and state your name. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the plan? Okay, hearing done. The public hearing will end, and we move into the public meeting. Any discussion amongst the board?
No, I think I'm okay with going forward with it, it is definitely unorthodox, and maybe it's just a lesson learned that we try to deal with it before, for the applicant's sake, so they don't have to listen to us doing all that, but I'm, I think this is minor enough, and there doesn't appear to be any kind of public concern other than just the city and the applicant, so, and feels like everybody's in the room that needs to voice their opinion on it, so I'm okay putting this, this modified condition.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, I would agree, whatever the disposition of this is, I don't think it impacts the board's decision whether. the board's decision whether or not to move forward with subdivision. There's just some technicalities that need to get resolved. So although it is unorthodox, I would agree moving forward is suitable in this case.
Any other discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Leclair?
All right. So I'd first like to make a motion regarding new, new business eight twenty-four dash zero zero seven two subdivision with respect to the requested waivers and that we grant the two waivers requested, specifically the one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine subdivision plan require, submittal plan, submittal requirements and section one ninety dash two twenty-one A and C with respect to utilities, with our considerations being consistent with, as written in the staff report.
Just one additional waiver. I'm reviewing the waiver letter right now. There's also a request for a minimum, to waive the minimum driveway width of twelve feet. So this is one ninety, two oh nine, A, one. And planning would be supportive of that. I would also defer to the city engineer.
Okay. Well, I'll put it out in the amended thing and you can comment on it in discussion. So I'll amend that motion to include one additional waiver specifically with respect to one ninety dash two oh nine A one, the driveway width, that also be approved with the considerations as indicated in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. Do I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, any further discussion? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, if staff could run that driveway thing by me one more time.
Yeah. So there's, there's a existing curb cut on the lot that is to be created out of the subdivision. And in the request, so this is in the supplemental material. The request is, section one ninety-two oh nine A one requires a driveway to have a minimum width of twelve feet. In utilizing the existing curb cut, it, it would not be twelve feet, it would be undersized, if I'm correct in that, yes. So in the spirit of not further disturbing curb, I think that's generally a good practice.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it was, smaller driveway I'm okay with. I was getting confused about maybe it was gonna be a bigger driveway, so thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yeah, I'll make a, a second motion regarding this application. And again, this is application eight twenty-four dash zero zero seven two, the subdivision. And the second motion be that we grant a conditional subdivision approval in accordance with the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO one ninety dash one thirty-eight G with the, one, two, three, four, five, six precedent conditions as indicated in the staff report with the following modifications to them. With respect to precedent condition B, it'd be reworded to read prior to the chair signing the plan. And if required after legal review, the East River Lot Line will be redrawn so that it does not bisect the city's right of way that serves as access to Mindful Park. The tabulations of lot statistics will need to be revised accordingly. And additionally, if legal review does determine that the applicant does not own the land under the right of way, the applicant shall return to the zoning board for relief. And the next amendment with respect to precedent condition D and that be revised to read prior to the chair signing the plan, all comments in a letter from Joe Mandola, Senior Staff Engineer, dated July second, twenty twenty four, will be addressed to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. Do I have a second?
Okay. Can I ask for the?
Yep.
Motion maker for one, edit. Just, it's Public Works Division, not department, that's all.
Okay, I said Public Works.
I'll second that amended.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next case on the docket. New business site plans, A twenty-four dash zero one zero seven. Has anyone had a chance to look at this application and like to make a motion to take jurisdiction? Mr. Hirsch?
I move to take jurisdiction.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Leclair? All those in favor?
Aye.
You have an applicant?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. My name's Stan Barowski. I'm with Fieldstone Land Consultants at two oh six Elm Street in Milford. And I'm here tonight representing the applicant's access realty who is seeking site plan approval for lots eighty-one sixty-seven and eighty-one seventy on Walnut Street. Lot eighty-one sixty-seven is currently a four-unit multifamily dwelling in the RC Urban Residence Zone, which utilizes a parking lot that covers the entirety of lot eighty-one seventy. Last year, the zoning board granted a variance to allow for two additional units to be constructed in the existing building. This addition requires reconfiguration of the parking lot to what is shown on the site plan. There are several conditions of approval. Sorry, we've asked for five waivers associated with this project with respect to existing conditions on abutting lots, landscaping plan, the number of parking spaces and their size, and a stormwater report. There are several conditions of, of approval outlined in the staff report, all of which our client is agreeable to. However, I did want to mention that the applicant would rather not, if possible, be required to plant, plant trees near the driveway throat. This area is already paved and planting trees could interfere with snow storage. And for heavy snowstorms, they may have to remove snow from the site, which is more easily done. If the site remains paved, we believe that this isn't the most suitable site to require trees. But that's our only comment on the conditions set forth in the staff report. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Open it up to the board. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I guess maybe one for staff. Maybe I'm just not seeing it. Where, where is the, is the tree request somewhere in the review letter or is?
The plan, actually.
It's, oh, it's on the plan?
Yeah, there should be two pages to the plan.
I think it was under the waiver.
Yeah.
Section.
There's a, so it would be top of second page of the report. Essentially, the, the applicant is requesting a waiver from any site landscaping, you know, recognizing it's a fully paved site. There's obviously some good justification for it. But with the reconfiguration of the parking lot, these two triangles open up by the driveway throat that can't be used for parking. And as such, you know, saw cutting out the pavement and, you know, planting it in a way that's compatible with the surrounding utilities, not only provides some, you know, additional open space in terms of, you know, the ability to infiltrate and less impervious, but also it, it begins to meet the intent of the regulations and it further justifies the waiving of that landscape requirement. The applicant brings up an interesting point about snow storage. This driveway in its proposed configuration, you would basically be pulling into the site, pulling into an angled parking space, and then your only way out is to back out of the site. If these areas are being used for snow storage, you basically are potentially looking at large snow piles as you stick the back end of your car out into a street and then you can't see past the snow. So I don't think it would generally be a good practice to be storing snow in this location anyways. But I understand, you know, the limitations and challenges that the site presents.
So is, is it staff's recommendation that the waiver?
So we're basically, we're recommending that it be granted on the condition that these areas be, the, the pavement be cut out and then planted.
Got it. Okay, I'm seeing it.
Is, is it specifically trees or it's just green?
Uh, there was a suggestion that because there are overhead utilities that like a dwarf ornamental variety be used, but shrubs would also be acceptable.
Thank you.
And I think we use the language, you know, work with staff to determine appropriate planting.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll move out to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward speaking in favor of the plan? Okay. I'll come bring it back to the board. The public hearing has ended.
Before you end it.
Oh, sorry.
Can you just do one more board question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Any more questions?
Yeah, so I, I just want to throw back out there. I heard the applicant, you know, indicate that they would prefer not to, but is it a showstopper if we leave it the way it is?
It's not a showstopper, no. We just, we'd like to ask.
Yep. No, that's fine. Asking's fine. May or may not get, but. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Before I close it all down on you?
I'm good with that clue.
Thank you. So we'll move into the public meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I'll throw a discussion out. I, I think I'm okay with the, the layout as is. I mean, I prefer to have something in the corners. I know it's not what the applicant asked for, but it doesn't sound like it's too much of a, too much of an issue to me. So I'm, I'm kind of in favor of the way the waivers are written currently in the staff report. Anybody else have any other thoughts?
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. I mean, looking at the abutting properties, they're, this one is fully impervious between pavement and building and whereas neighboring properties have at least a little bit of green, greenery, plantings and such. So I think it, it would be in addition to kind of helping control some of the access. It would also be in keeping with the budding, budding area. So I think it was a good suggestion staff made and I would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any other discussion topics? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll keep going. So I'm gonna make a first motion, and I think, I think this is with respect to, this is case number, staff me, correct me, is eight twenty-four dash zero one zero seven, right? I think the report might have a different number at the top, but.
Eight two four zero one zero seven.
Okay, so I'm gonna say case number eight twenty-four dash zero one zero seven. And the first motion I'm gonna make is with respect to the requested waivers and that we grant those waivers, A through E, as written in the staff report. And that we recognize the considerations as also written in the staff report.
Excellent. Thank you. So we hear an approval for case eight twenty-four dash zero one zero seven. Do we have a second? Mr. Green, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a second motion with respect to this application. And that second motion be to grant conditional site plan approval in accordance and indicate that the, the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO dash, or section one ninety dash one forty-six D and that the precedent and subsequent conditions in the staff report be included in this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. We have another motion for approval. Do we have a second? Mr. Hirsch, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you.
Uh, no, I think it's just the tentative agenda and the. Refer.
Yeah, all right. So we'll move into other business and review of the tentative agenda. Has anyone had a chance to review the tentative agenda to see if there's anything that would present impact? Mr. Hirsch?
Reviewed the tentative agenda and found nothing, no issues of regional impact.
Thank you very much. Make a motion? Do I have a second? No.
Yeah, he made the motion, right? Second, I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes. All right. Other business, referral from the Board of Alderman regarding ordinance zero dash two four, actually, O dash two four dash zero two two, amending the zoning map by rezoning land situated south of Burke Street and east of Ingalls Street, north of Salmon Brook and west of line running north and south perpendicular to Burke Street, which is four hundred fifty point two feet easterly of the intersection of Major Drive and Burke Street from C Urban Residence, RC, to C Urban Residence with Mixed Use Overlay District, RCMU. Do we have a presentation?
We do, and I'm gonna turn it over to the.
Thank you.
Well, I can't say the petitioner because technically the city is the petitioner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Gottesman and Hollis, thirty-nine East Pearl Street in Nashua. And I represent Hampshire Housing and Development Authority, which is the owner of Maynard Homes and Vagie Village. For those who are familiar, they're part of the legacy of National Housing Authority, but it's name changed now. But they've always provided affordable and reasonable housing for those who just can't, can't make it in the standards that we have moved to these days, the expense of housing. So they are continuing to try to solve this problem as much as they can. And one of those issues is Maynard Homes and Vagie Village. That is located off of Burke Street and it is located on an RC zoned parcel. That is, multifamily is allowed there. The parcel, zoning parcel is pretty much occupied by Maynard Homes and Vagie Village with a few single-family, nice modest homes, just immediately adjacent to the development. I'm also here this evening on behalf of the Housing Authority's Development Partner, Tremont Development Partners LLC. And we are really here speaking in support of this ordinance and urging the planning board to pass it, but also in cooperation with the city, who is the presenter of the ordinance, if you will, to the Board of Alderman. I'm just gonna take a few minutes to provide you some relevant background to how this ordinance has come to you to consider it. It is also before the Board of Alderman Planning and Economic Development Committee, and I'll have a public hearing there on next Tuesday, the sixteenth. This project began with the Housing Authority realizing a need to upgrade Maynard Homes and Vagie Village housing. And they've been evaluating all of their properties, particularly in the last few years, but over time. And they authorized a full analysis and study of that development and an understanding of what would be necessary to upgrade the housing there. Following the receipt of the study, which included somewhat what I refer to as a cost benefit analysis. If we invest X, what are we going to get? If we invest Y, what are we going to get? And the best summary I can give is that the only real practical solution to provide adequate housing in that location is to simply remove and replace. And so that is the path after months and years of analysis that the Housing Authority decided to take. As you know, they underwent a similar study and similar analysis and similar progress on the former Bronstein Apartments next to the Walnut Street Oval where Penet Chuck is. And they have redeveloped that, and that was before you, and you vetted that project and you analyzed it and approved it. And so they're moving forward with similar partners. And the first. And the first, the first step was, if we're gonna remove and replace, what is the best type of housing and how can we provide more housing? And it's the same analysis they did for the Bronstein Apartments. The, as I said, it's in an RC zone. There's a limitation on number of units per acre in the RC zone. And quite frankly, the Housing Authority would like to get as many units that are affordable as possible, both subsidized and affordable housing. So they've looked at several avenues, had a long discussion with the city about what's the best approach to try to obtain more housing. Increasing the density is clearly the easiest way, since there's no other land out there to obtain. And there are a variety of ways to do that. And of course, one way is if it were zoned to allow it, you can go up to twelve point five acres, twelve point five units per acre, but in this case, that's not gonna obtain too much more housing. So the next step would be to look at whether there could be relief under the zoning ordinance, and as you know, the relief is, would be by variance or by changing the zoning. As I say, after a lot of discussion with the city staff, brainstorming, if you will, the city recommended to the Housing Authority, and the Housing Authority agreed, that the best and most logical course would be to add a mixed-use overlay zone on top of the RC zone in which this property is located. And the reason it makes some, a great deal of sense is that, most unusually, but it exists, is that almost the entirety of the RC zone is, in fact, the Housing Authority property. As I say, there's a handful of other properties. While one might, if, when we're trying to adopt new zoning today, it might be looked on as spot zoning. But that zoning exists, so we don't have to worry about spot zoning. We're just worried about modifying that zoning. And what the city recommended and the applicant has agreed to, or the Housing Authority's agreed to, is, why don't we do an overlay? It's the same overlay that was in Bronstein. It's the same overlay that has been created in other parts of the city and been used successfully. And you, as the planning board, are most familiar, probably of all bodies in the city, of this overlay allowance. Because under the overlay district, the mixed-use overlay district, wherever it's applied, the issues of density, setback, design, all come to you. They don't go before the zoning board, where they're not really in the business of deciding what's appropriate and what's good. They have very narrow criteria by the law. So if it could be rezoned to allow a mixed-use overlay, it would come back to you. And this is where the decision would be made as to whether this new development or redevelopment would be appropriate. So how to do that? In the meantime, during the talks with the city, there were plans shown. The plans went to the neighbors, went to the residents. The residents met with the Housing Authority and the partner. The neighbors met with the Housing Authority and the partner. There were a lot of good comments shared. And over time, the original plan was downsized. For example, the number of units initially was three fifty-nine, downsized to two seventy-four on the current plan that's, that is going to be presented. The parking spaces went from proposed six forty-six to four forty-seven. Again, a significant reduction at the request of and with the influence of the neighbors and the residents. There were five stories proposed, we're down to three and four stories. So there's been some back and forth, a lot of back and forth. And the next step that has to occur is we need to get the zoning changed. And the city is moving forward with this zoning change. And it was introduced to the Board of Alderman last month. It was assigned for a first reading to the Automatic Planning and Economic Development Committee next Tuesday, and of course, it was assigned to you for your review. I, as I say, you don't really need to have me explain to you what your authorities are under a mixed-use overlay zone, because you've exercised them quite well, and there are a number of excellent projects as a result of that. You get the whole package before you to analyze and approve or disapprove or modify. We're optimistic that this particular ordinance as proposed will pass, but we need your support this evening to make a recommendation so that the Automatic Planning and Economic Development Committee can realize that you took it up, you considered it, you thought about it, answered questions if you, asked questions if you had any, and gave it your support. As I said, this area is in the RC zone. The plan, which is up on the board, shows the area, if you're not familiar with it. And as I mentioned, it's a rather unique zone, but that's how it was created. It wrapped around this parcel and subsequently developed. The neighbors are in the RB. There are a number of single and duplex units that are immediately adjacent. And then on the easterly side of the, the southerly side, of course, is Salmon Brook. And on the easterly side is a development, even though it's in the industrial zone, formerly IMCO or Improver Machinery, or Ingersoll Rand, or the City Barn, however you want to approach it. But a portion of that has been devoted to also housing, multifamily housing. That's Wagner Court. But that's in the industrial zone, but thereby a variance. So in this case, it is a very self-contained district. If you approve the ordinance or recommend approval, and if the Board of Alderman votes it, it will not significantly impact anyone else other than the Housing Authority. None of those five individual lots would be able to put multifamily, greater density. They're just too small. There might be some assemblage of, if you wanted to buy up all of them together, but this really won't impact anyone. It allows for greater planning control. As I said, first, it's, it's in the proper place. It's gonna first go to the Automatic Committee on the sixteenth, and then after that, it will go with whatever recommendation they make, thumbs up or thumbs down. It will go to the full board of the Alderman. And, and I should also give you a little bit of inside information. As you checked your agenda, we are first on the agenda August one with the site plan, which has been submitted in anticipation of positive feedback from the board on the legislation and passage by the Board of Alderman. So we, the process is in play. It's almost a side-by-side. Oftentimes, you do a side-by-side. You do a site plan and a zoning change. But in this instance, the city is moving the zoning change because it feels it's the right thing to do. And then the applicant is moving the site plan on its own. I think it might be appropriate, but it's up to you, Madam Chair and members of the board, if you want to hear a very brief cogent preliminary preview of what you're going to see on August one, if it helps you make a decision. But if not, it's shown on the plan. With me this evening is Jim Petropolis, and he can answer any questions, or he can speak if you want, but if you're comfortable and you feel like you want to get home, that's entirely up to you. All the plans, maybe you can scroll through quickly, but there's the, there is where it exists today, and that's what it's gonna look like when it's approved. And then next down is just sort of examples of what it'll look like. That's, that's what's in the planning board application pending before the various city departments, before it gets to you on August one. Again, it, sometimes it's good to have a preview, because this legislation is really tied to the site plan. And if you, if you are recommended in favor of it, you probably ought to know what might be coming. So that's what I have. And Madam Chair, I'll leave it to the board if you'd like to hear from Mr. Petropolis. He's here. Also, Mr. Tom Monahan, who's a commissioner with the Housing Authority, is here if you have any questions from the Housing Authority. Thank you.
Mr. Leclair?
I just have a couple of questions. So in the proposal to put the overlay on, the underlying RC will just, would stay? It would just stay there?
Correct.
There'd be no change to that? Not that it would affect the overlay, but, so, but there is no intent to change that? That would require the zoning change to change that underlay, right?
Correct. And the rezoning still has to, the process is the same when you're overlaying a new district or changing the underlying?
And then, is there a reason why the overlay didn't go more easterly and pick up the... I mean, if they already changed, they already have a variance for the housing that's kind of to the east, is there any value in the, or flexibility if we were to grab that as part of the overlay, just for future?
We had a lot of discussion about that very question. In fact, we talked about grabbing the entirety of the industrial and making both zones subject to the mixed-use overlay. But there are a lot of abutters around that industrial zone. And when you make a mixed-use overlay, that nobody really knows what might happen in the future to an industrial zone. You bring in a lot of questions that don't pertain to what's really being attempted here, which is keep the focus on housing. We could've grabbed Wagner Court, but again, that's in a different zone, so we couldn't say, let's just add the overlay to the RC district. We'd have to say, let's add the overlay to the RC and a small portion of the industrial. Now you kind of open up the spot zoning question. So we just, the city, the lawyers, everybody involved, just felt like this is the way to... We also did evaluate, rather than do an overlay, should we just change the zone and make it a more dense zone, create a new zone? And we felt this was the proper way, because it's been done before in the city. There's a, there's a local business rezoning that occurred at Lake and Pine, you may recall. It has some intense housing there, done very nicely. It worked out well. There's been some changes out on Amherst Street. There's obviously the downtown overlay, where multiple places have had different density and setback requirements than the underlying zone, and it was all through the planning board.
So, you know, just big picture, it was just to kind of keep it simple?
Keep it simple.
That's what it was for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't...
In a lot of it...
I was just wondering why.
Just so there's no mystery about the speed here, where there are some grants available.
Yeah.
And they, they, to make, to get them, we have to move lickety-split and get it done immediately.
And you guys evaluated against the master plan. I mean, it looks like it's in conformance with me, to me anyway.
We did, yes.
Those are my only questions.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Do you want a preview of the site plan or wait?
Would you like to see it?
I don't need it, but...
We can wait, I think.
Yeah, we're gonna get it pretty quick anyway.
We'll wait to see the presentation.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hollis. All right, so we have this referral from the Board of Alderman regarding ordinance O dash twenty-four dash zero twenty-two. Would anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Leclair?
Sure, I'll make a motion for a positive referral from the planning board to the Board of Alderman regarding ordinance O dash twenty-four dash zero twenty-two.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Green? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, well, would anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
I just have one discussion thing.
Oh, sorry.
Sam, we talked about an update on the land use.
Yes.
Do you have a ball, I mean, the summer's not a great time to do it anyway. I'd probably do it in the fall, when we have better attendance, anyway.
Yes.
You might want to, like, advertise a couple of meetings out, when that might be?
Yeah, so a couple of things on this. In speaking with our consultants, the target is to have a first draft, kind of an internal first draft, this month, where we can kind of shop it around at various departments. We can review internally. There's gonna be a lot of tweaking that needs to be done, and then really go public with the first draft, probably in September. That's, that's the current target. And I certainly heard your, your comments last time about, you know, providing the board with an update and a bit of a presentation, and I fully intend to do that. Got a little sidetracked, because you'll notice it's just Scott and I up here tonight. Lynda McGee is retiring effective next Friday. So she's, she's out enjoying herself with some, with some friends this evening. And so it'll just be Scott and I for a while, until, you know, someone else joins us. So that's why you're seeing my name on some staff reports, kind of filling that staff report gap right now. So a little bit of a distraction from the land use code, but thankfully, we have consultants working hard on it. So I do think that probably a little bit later, maybe September, if that's not too far out.
It's probably better, I think, in terms of getting people in and giving us a couple of, you know, a couple of meetings noticed, so that, you know... Because we might want to pick which, which, you know, agenda. It probably wants to go on a smaller agenda meeting, too, I would assume, like, not one where we're...
Yeah.
Right.
Super packed.
Well, and we're currently fleshing out some pretty key components that really affect the whole function of the plan. So, yeah, hopefully by, by September, we're gonna be in a pretty good place to have a very robust conversation, not too in the weeds, too heavy, but, you know, covering the really important high points and talking a little bit about the functionality of the code.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Hudson?
To the previous topic, you know, depending how much it is, might warrant a workshop or something. I don't know. Versus adding to an agenda, agendas seem to be pretty full. But, you know, maybe a workshop where we could just focus on those issues. That's just to take that up as a suggestion.
On that, we do, we do have, you know, scheduled with our consultant, I say scheduled, more in the scope of work, you know, some pretty robust public engagement sessions following the first draft, which certainly the planning board would be invited to. But I do think, you know, a planning board-specific workshop would be good, and so we could probably coordinate on that and roll that into that slate of events.
Yeah, Dan, were you saying, like, maybe a workshop with respect to the various kinds of overlays we have? I feel like we might've done that, like, maybe like five or three years ago, a long time ago. But that might not be a bad thing, because we have, like, you know, the tax incentive ones, the, you know, the mixed-use overlays, the transportation overlay.
Oh, the code's gonna clean all that up, thankfully.
So, yeah, so maybe we need to know, maybe subsequent to that cleanup, what's being proposed.
Yes, yeah, and there are some, there are some overlays in the new code, but operating very differently. So it really is gonna be a comprehensive, kind of a re-education on the land use code, but...
Yeah, I just want, I want the board to attack it with a fresh mind at nine o'clock, after we've done five of the cases, type of thing.
Oh, I agree.
So we can give it the attention it deserves. Switching gears, I brought up the, the plan issue today. My preference is to, that we post full plan sets, full, full sheets of plan sets.
Detail sheets included?
Yeah, I believe that's important. I believe the public should be provided an opportunity to see the full plan set, and I think the technology is such that that should be capable. I know most people won't care, but...
So most plan sets that we get from HSI on big projects are over a hundred mags?
Well, that's why I think we should work with the applicant. I mean, if we scan plans, they get big, but I don't see a reason why plans can't be printed and be...
These are coming in not scanned.
Yeah, these are like...
They're, they're the digital, and they're a hundred mags.
Yeah.
So you can, you can load them the night before and then open up...
The fifteen-page set, I don't understand how that could be a hundred mags, but anyway. If you do have to pare it down, my suggestion would be make sure the drainage and utility plans are included. Those are the detailed plans that certainly I have interest in and would be informative. So I wouldn't exclude those from whatever pared-down set. Unless, unless, unless packages are heavy graphics, I don't understand the size of, the size you're talking about.
I, I do wonder why they are that large as well.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should work with...
Yes.
And I don't know if that's all applicants, but I think we should work with applicants. They give you a hundred meg file, so it could just be smaller. See if there's a way to work it.
Well, even like lighting and landscaping, even like those that I like to look at.
Yeah.
Those lighting plans are surprisingly large, in terms of a file size. There's a lot of little dots on them.
Yeah, a lot of little dots. In certain cases, I want to see that.
Yes.
I think there are some reduction technologies within my blue...
Oh, and we, we compress the, the file size every single time, and, you know...
Maybe it's two links, you know, maybe one link is for the presentation.
Yeah, you know, for...
We could try breaking them up. We'll, we'll look at some solutions.
Yes, maybe work with applicant to see what the offending file is. If it's just lighting, maybe that gets a little separate link or whatever. I don't know what the answer is.
If it's applicable, too, like...
Yeah, and I would just, switching gears again, if I may.
Okay, where are we going?
I would just ask if staff has any updates on any, any cases. I think I heard some stuff at a BOA meeting the other day, and I was curious if that's suitable to share.
Are we talking about cases, pending litigation cases? Are we talking about cases, pending litigation cases?
That's what I'm referring to. Are you gonna go to an all-public, or?
No, 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 no.
What I heard was in public.
There is some news that is public, in that the plaintiff in the asphalt plant case has dropped their appeal, so the denial of that case will stand. They, with prejudice, so basically they cannot then re-appeal at a later date.
Okay, was, what, is the Costco one still out there?
So that's actually resolved. We, the court decided in BJ's favor, so they actually do want to come back, and as part of that, we're gonna have to look at traffic data, new traffic data, because the court really found that the traffic data that was used was old and not reflective of current trends, so that's gonna be a component, and they do intend to resubmit, probably, I would say, before the year is out.
Yeah, good.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I appreciate that, thank you. Anyone like to second that?
A second.
Mr. Green, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at, I can't, we can't see what time it is. Eight fifty-one P.M.